And join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to our Tuesday morning meeting, April ninth, two thousand and twenty four, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andy Huntous. To my left, Commissioner Tom Roloff. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
To Commissioner Roloff's left is Nadine McCarty and Flo Liston, taking care of us today. Thank you very much. To my right, Commissioner Candace Payne. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Candace's right, Deputy County Attorneys Nico Hash and Egan Shea. Morning, gentlemen. And Roger Baltz, our Chief Administrative Officer. As I said a few minutes ago, offline, there is a sign-in sheet in the front as well as agendas. Please sign in prior to leaving today. So we have a good record of our attendance. We will start with our consent action items. Mr. Baltz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'll read it into the record for you to consider. It's item two A on the agenda today, Resolution two zero two four dash one eight, declaring county property surplus property. Staff recommends approval, and that's the only consent item for you today, Commissioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baltz. Any questions, Commissioners? Any questions about the consent action item?
None here.
Any public comment on the consent action item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, hearing none, Commissioners. Is there a motion, please?
Uh, Chairman, I move that we approve consent action item two A as presented by Mr. Baltz.
Second.
Moved in second and approved consent action item two A as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. All right, we're on to item three on our agenda, which is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Axon Enterprise, Inc. Good morning, Captain.
Morning. So I'm Captain Bradley Bragg with the Lewis and Clark County Detention Center. Today I'm here to present our TASER contract. As many people know, TASERS are what we use as a less lethal device on the street and in the detention center. It does become pricey at times, so we actually went out and found different options with the purchase of them. The one that we actually found was a five-year contract, and that way we can be supplied with all of our TASERS, our cartridges, our training, all the certifications that we need is all included with this. The contract total is for four hundred and four thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents, which comes out to eighty thousand dollars or eighty thousand, four hundred and seven dollars for each year for the next five years. This contract gives us cost certainty over the next five years as far as what this is going to cost us rather than what we were looking at. The other alternative is purchasing as we go and purchasing certifications as we go. When we sat down and did the math with the stats, that what we have for staff turnover and with recertifications, this could have easily cost almost a hundred thousand dollars a year for us to be able to do this. So by signing this contract, we're actually able to save a substantial amount of money each year and lock us in for the next five years with the same price.
Beautiful. Thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
No.
Captain, I'll just ask a couple on behalf of the public. It sounds like a lot of money, but when we're talking this number of TASERS, so there's, there's a lot, and you can give me a ballpark number, but then those have to be certified, maintained, checked. I mean, they have to work. So when somebody goes to use those in the field, they have to rely on them. So those have to be certified on a regular basis and all those kinds. That's what we're talking about here. Just speak to that a little bit so folks think, wow, geez, a TASER shouldn't cost that much or certifying a TASER, but it's a whole slew of them. And after someone is in the field for a period of time, I'm sure they have to be recertified and all of that. Can you just speak to that a little bit?
Yep. Mr. Chair, what this contract includes is every one of our detention officers and patrol guys. So it comes out to about a hundred and twenty TASERS that are included with this. It also includes all the batteries that are required for it. It includes all of our training cartridges that we have to do. We have to do a certain number of deployments with training cartridges and live cartridges every year to be, to remain certified on the device. It also includes an unlimited number of our field deployments. So if we have to use a cartridge in the field, we are already going to get this replaced without us having to pay that additional cost. So currently, if we use a cartridge, we have to pay for a new cartridge. With this new device, what we'll actually be able to do is we use a cartridge and we already have one on hand to replace it, and we just keep getting supplied with it as much as we need throughout the duration of this contract. So it is for the maintenance of the device. They're under warranty for the five years that we have them. So if a device goes down and breaks, we can send it back to Axon who runs TASER, and they can actually send us a new device. So it covers all those contingencies of, I mean, stuff breaks when you're in the field, and this allows us to be able to get it fixed quicker.
Great. Thank you for that explanation. I think it's just good information for the public to understand. Any other questions, Commissioners, for Captain Bragg?
I've, I'll ask Captain Bragg. One of the issues that keep coming in front of us are, our property taxes are going up and going up. And I get stopped at the grocery store every once in a while about this. And one of the things I say to them is, well, our property taxes go up so that we can have not only streets and schools, but our law enforcement needs to have appropriate equipment. We can't have them using old equipment against the new drug runners. And so I guess what I'm asking is, is this included in your regular budget that we see first, or will, we will be seeing, so this will be included in there? And how much per year is this for your contract?
That the-
Five-year contract?
Commissioner, the, the increase isn't, I don't think it's an increase at all in our budget for TASERS. This just gets us a newer device and is able to, is already included with what we have budgeted and what we've had budgeted in the past. So this isn't an increase or anything that has to do with the property taxes. This is just normal operating expenses for the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Captain. That's really important. We get that information out, that this is all considered and it's part of what we do. And you do a good job. So thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any other questions?
I just appreciate you shopping around and trying to get us a good deal and saving the taxpayers some money.
Yep. Unfortunately, there's, there's not another company that can provide the device that is commonly used across the nation. But we were trying to find different ways, whether it was signing a five-year contract or continuing to do what we have been doing of purchasing as we go. And, and this is just the more cost-effective way for us to do it.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll turn to public comment. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment on this contract? Any public comment? Okay. Hearing none, Commissioners? Is there a motion to approve this contract with Axon?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Axon Enterprises Incorporated, as explained by Captain Bragg.
Second.
Moved in second and approved the contract as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Just thank you for bringing it forward, for helping us understand. Sometimes these numbers are very large, but people don't really understand what, what all goes into that and, and the length of the contract and all of the safety that's involved. So I just appreciate the explanation. Okay, with that, Commissioners, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is a grant application to the United States Department of Justice. Captain?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Captain Brian Robinson with the Sheriff's Office. Currently, I oversee the Patrol Division and Criminal Investigations. Today, for your consideration, we have a preliminary grant application to United States Department of Justice for the Law Enforcement, Mental Health and Wellness Act for two thousand and twenty-four. So kind of to talk about what this act does is that it provides funds to law enforcement agencies for access to mental health and wellness services through peer support, training, family resources, suicide prevention, and other practices to improve mental health within the law enforcement community. I don't want to take up much of your time, but I do want to kind of get it into maybe a personal experience. So I've been law enforcement officer for a little over twenty-four years, come in June. I remember the first death that I went to, it's very vivid in my mind. It was a girl that I went to high school with, and she had committed suicide. I remember after that incident, I had a senior officer ask me if I was okay. And me being a young twenty-three-year-old in a new profession where you're supposed to be manly and masculine, I said, yep, not a problem. Fast forward sixteen years later, saw a lot of things, saw a lot of things on, on the street that were not so pleasant and just compartmentalized and put those away in the back of my mind. And then in April of two thousand and sixteen, I was working a patrol shift. It was a nice spring day, and I got dispatched out to Canyon Ferry Lake, Shannon Boat Launch. Basically, all the information that came in was that there was a three-year-old not breathing on the beach. When I got there, the fire department was already there, and one of my coworkers, now Captain Bradley Bragg, who was a deputy, he was volunteering for one of the fire departments back then. He was doing CPR on this three-year-old, and I remember vividly walking up on and watching Bragg do everything that he could to save this child. I remember the child was completely blue, lifeless, not moving. I remember dealing with the father, who was absolutely distraught and didn't know what to do. And at the end of that, all I could really ask Brad was, are you all right? And of course, he said, yes, I am. I went home that night. Every time I closed my eyes, all I could see was that kid. All I could see was Brad. And I just could not get that image out of my head for many, many, many months. Fast forward a year later, June twenty seventeen, we get dispatched out to Spring Meadow Lake for a seven-year-old who's missing. Mom's calling in frantic, can't find her son. He's been gone for forty-five minutes. Brad gets on scene, and he starts interviewing people, and his last location is somewhere in the water, in three feet of water. Bystanders go out there, they locate seven-year-olds submerged in the water. Brad pulls him out, does CPR. I arrive on scene, and it was an exact replica of what I saw a year prior of Brad doing CPR frantically to save this child's life. After that incident, I could just see the look on Brad's face. He, and I felt helpless because there was nothing that I could do for him. We don't have any services other than, hey, Brad, are you okay? And I could tell that he wasn't. And the only thing I could do was send him home with his spouse and continue to check up on him. This grant would allow us to hopefully subcontract with a mental health professional that would be on standby for us when we have incidents like this, where we could directly link up our first responders with somebody immediately to talk about these issues. That way, they don't have to wait until they can get an appointment with their regular mental health therapist or someone else. In addition, there are several companies out there these days that market software to the law enforcement world, where we can actually go onto an app, and they will connect us directly with other law enforcement professionals throughout the United States as peer support, who can just talk us through those bad days. And with this money, up to two hundred thousand is the award that you can apply for. I'm not sure if we're going to need that full amount, but I wanted the option to apply for that if we could, to try to get some sort of services for all of our first responders with Lewis and Clark County. That would include all deputies, all detention, all civilian staff and their families to have access to these resources. So we would like you to consider our pre-application for this grant. And it is due April twenty-fourth of this month. So I've got some work to do.
Captain, thank you very much for the presentation and for your personal stories. Appreciate it very much. And this is really important. Commissioners, questions for Captain?
This is a two-year contract, uh?
Yes, sir. It's a two-year grant period, so it would go from basically October of this year through September of two thousand and twenty-six is the grant period.
And if we're able to get it, we can figure it into next year, next two years' budgets, is that right?
Yes, we could.
Okay. Do you have a fallback plan if you don't, if you don't get this grant?
Right now, we don't. We would have to budget for it separately out of our own Sheriff's Office budget, and I don't know if we can make that happen. We would like to make that happen. Unfortunately, some of these expenses are quite expensive to get a professional person on staff.
Any other question? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion, please, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the grant application to the United States Department of Justice, as explained by Captain Robinson.
Second.
Moved in second and approved the grant application as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? I do. I just, I'm moved by your story as well, but this, this in general is some of the most important work we can do to support our people, I believe, because as you described, those were just a couple of incidents, and there's all kinds of incidents that deputies and detention officers are seeing every day that are pretty traumatic and can be pretty traumatic. And to care for our mental health and to recognize that as an important part of, of law enforcement as any other part. We just talked about TASERS. We want mentally healthy people and people that are taking care of themselves as well and having access to resources to take care of themselves just as much as we need good equipment. So it's part of the good equipment from my perspective and very important. I'm actually very, really happy that the local press is here today to talk about this because it's one of the best things we can do, and I wholeheartedly support this grant application. I really hope we get it. So-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Captain.
Yep.
Anything further, Commissioners?
Thank you. Covered it.
All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is an agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Area Forty-One Vigilante's Gun Club. Captain?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, again, Captain Robinson with the Sheriff's Office. This is an agreement between Area Forty-One Vigilante Gun Club and the Sheriff's Office for an annual contract of twelve hundred dollars to use their, basically their gun range. So a little back history, the Sheriff's Office alone does not have our own firearms range where we can do training or qualify our officers on, on their handguns and rifles. Currently, we have a partnership with the Helena Police Department to use their range out at the Helena Airport. What we have found is that range is becoming more and more popular to the other law enforcement agencies and private entities in the region, simply because there aren't a whole lot of options out there for us to use. The military has, within the last year, has ended any civilian use of their ranges just for liability purposes. So we had that option at one point. It is no longer there. And then with some of the other public ranges, there are certain restrictions that don't quite fit into law enforcement training. So we would be prohibited from doing a certain amount of things. We reached out and made contact with Area Forty-One Vigilante Club, and they were more than excited to work with the Sheriff's Office and the county to provide us an area where we could do law enforcement training. And this would be a supplemental range. When we can't use the city range, they are looking at overhauling their practices and how they allow other agencies to use their range. And one of the things that have been discussed is whether or not they would have to start charging entities to, to use their range to cover their insurance costs and liabilities. So we ask that you consider this contract between the two agencies. It would be up for three-year annual renewal. So every year, it'd have to be renewed up to three years, and then we could renegotiate if things weren't working out.
Okay. Excuse me again. Okay. Commissioners, questions?
Uh, this is a relatively small amount, but is it anticipated in the current budget or not?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? I just, since you brought it up, we have opportunity. The city gun range, you're talking about the one out at the airport?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And it's an outdoor facility, right?
It is an outdoor facility.
It's limited to weather and all those kinds of things.
It is.
And, but that has been a kind of a mainstay when, when the weather's good enough. That's where you folks do training.
Yep, that's, we've had a good partnership with the city over the, well, the twenty-three years that I've been here of using their range. It's just becoming more and more popular. A lot of entities are using it to the point where we have to schedule three to six months out just to get out onto the ranges because it's, it's the only one available for anybody to use for, between Montana Law Enforcement Academy, Department of Justice, FBI, ATF, probation, everybody wants to use it because it's the only one available.
And weather dependent.
And weather dependent.
That's right. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions, Commissioners, on this item? Okay, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment on this proposed agreement? Any public comments? Okay, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move to approve the agreement between Lewis and Clark County and Area Forty-One Vigilante's Gun Club.
Second.
Moved in second, moved and seconded to approve the agreement as presented. Boy, I'm having trouble today.
I was gonna say it's Monday, but it's not.
Yeah, Monday. Too fast. Okay, any other discussion, Commissioners?
All right. Okay, I've got a question regarding, okay, this is for the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Office. Do other counties have their own shooting ranges? Or how does Broadwater County or Jefferson County deal with this?
Some do. I know from my past experience, like Gallatin County, they have their own. They actually purchased an old, a private gun club that was indoors. They used some money to purchase that. So they have their own facility. Yellowstone County has their own facility, which is about twenty miles out of town. Most entities, most counties have some county property that they use somewhere in their county to use, but we just have never had that opportunity in Lewis and Clark County since, since I've been here for the twenty-four years.
Seems like an important thing to have.
That's the next project, is looking for our own spot.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, any further comments? All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We've taken public comment. Commissioners, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Captain. Appreciate it. All right, the next item on our agenda is a Grant Task Order Amendment Number One to Task Order twenty-four dash zero seven dash seven dash one one dash one forty-seven dash zero between Lewis and Clark County and Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Drenda Neiman. I'm the Health Officer for Lewis and Clark Public Health. And today I have before you a contract amendment from the Department of Public Health and Human Services to fund our wastewater surveillance program. Testing of local municipal wastewater for COVID- nineteen or SARS-CoV- two has been occurring in Helena and East Helena since August of two thousand and twenty, under a memorandum of understanding between Helena and East Helena wastewater treatment facilities and Carroll College. This non-invasive wastewater surveillance proved to be an important population indicator in identifying the virus levels before cases were confirmed through diagnostic testing, allowing health officials to prepare timely response for possible surge in the COVID- nineteen cases. In response to COVID, the COVID- nineteen pandemic, CDC launched the National Wastewater Surveillance System in September of two thousand and twenty. The wastewater testing findings for Helena and East Helena became part of the national system in May of two thousand and twenty-two. Because the wastewater surveillance can provide an early warning and that disease may be spreading in our community, the CDC is working with local health departments to better understand how wastewater surveillance can also be used to detect and respond to other infectious diseases such as flu, threats like antibiotic resistance, and foodborne diseases like norovirus. This amendment that you have before you extends our current contract out to June of two thousand and twenty-six, and increases the amount of funding to a total of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. At this time, we, the current contract that we have helps to fund what Carroll College is doing for us. And so what the process looks like is there are samples weekly taken from those two wastewater facilities and delivered to Carroll College. The staff, the scientists at Carroll College use their laboratory to then analyze those samples and do the data analytics. And then they provide all of that data both to the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services, as well as the CDC for the National Surveillance System. The current contract that we have ends in June of two thousand and twenty-four. And so this amendment allows us to continue this work out through two thousand and twenty-six and increases the funding to allow our service provider to, to not only continue with the one test per week, but increase it to two tests per week, which is now a recommend, a requirement by the CDC to continue to be a part of the national system. So these, these funds will allow us to continue the program and also increase to two samples per week. And then we will also be starting to dive into other viruses like, like the flu. Right now, we're still just sampling for COVID. All of that data gets publicized both locally on our dashboard here in Lewis and Clark County. It also gets publicized at the state level, and then it gets publicized at the national level through the national dashboard as well. So we're a part of this really great network that's happening to understand disease in our, in our community. We will, due to procurement laws, we will have to put this out for a request for proposal because of the amount of the contract will exceed the eighty thousand dollars. That is the limit. And so we have that RFP posted right now so that we can get proposals and continue the service, the laboratory service that we don't do at the Health Department, but we need a contractor to do that work, which is what Carroll College has done for us since two thousand and twenty. So that's all, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. So I just want to kind of sum it up here if I could. These are federal dollars that come down through the states that then are distributed to the local public health departments in Montana across the state. This is happening across the country. And then samples are taken from our wastewater, municipal wastewater systems. Right now, you just said it's going to be going out for RFP or forbid, but right now, those samples go to Carroll College. Carroll College does the testing, and those test results then are reported back to our funding agencies, but then also the data is made public for that. And what they're, they're learning a lot through this process is what I gathered from what you're talking about. And other viruses like the flu and other things might be, this might be a way to detect that, any spike in the community for public health response. Is that?
Correct.
Sum it up. Okay?
Correct on all accounts, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. So I just wanted to do that. But nothing, this is not coming out of our Health Department's annual budget. This is dollars coming from the state.
Correct.
Via federal funding.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, our current contract is a part of our fiscal year twenty-four budget. This amendment is not. It will have to be added in as additional funding for fiscal year twenty-four, and then we'll, we'll have it as a part of our fiscal year twenty-five budget.
Right. What I, what I meant is it's not local tax.
It is not local tax dollars. These are federal dollars that flow through the state to the locals. Correct.
Right. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, questions? Yes?
Yes, of course. Even though they're federal dollars, could we agree that they're still funded by the taxpayers?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, absolutely. Yeah, anytime we get a grant from the CDC or the U.S. Department of Public Health and Human Services, those are tax dollars. It's just not our local property tax dollars that's paying for the service. These are federal tax dollars.
Yes. Okay. So you're not included in the budget for this year, but you want to add a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Now, and this will be in your twenty-five budget, or is that in the twenty-four budget?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, the current contract is in our twenty-four budget. The amendment will be added, and then we will budget moving forward into the next two years. This is a two-year. This, this amendment takes us two years out to two thousand and twenty-six. So we will, we will add the funds for this current fiscal year, and then you will see it in our budget for fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six.
Okay, so this hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, you don't start using that money until July first?
No, ma'am. We will, as soon as this is approved, we can start using, it's an amendment to our current contract that we have right now. So we can start using these funds immediately as soon as the amendment is approved. So our fiscal year twenty-four budget would be amended to include this funding. And then you will see it also in our fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six budgets. It allows us to continue the work for the next two years.
Even though this wasn't included- Even though this wasn't included, this is not part of your 24 budget, is that correct?
The current, the original contract is. The amendment of the $189,000 is not.
Okay, $189,950.
Correct.
That, to me, is a significant increase.
Absolutely.
That is almost the $200,000. I believe you were short last year, is that right?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, this is, these are different dollars that are specifically intended for a specific type of work. So these dollars can only be used, only be used for the wastewater surveillance program.
But they weren't included in the budget that we approved for 2024, is that correct?
The original contract was.
The original contract was, but not the $189,000?
Correct, that's, it's added funding. The amendment results in added funding to not only this year, but also funding for the next two years. Correct. Thank you. You're welcome.
Other questions?
Just one question. How long would you anticipate this going on? It seems like we're kind of getting through most of the COVID pandemic things. And would you anticipate this going on forever? Or just be something that would eventually kind of, we'd be done with?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Ralph, that's a great question. I actually do anticipate that wastewater surveillance will continue long into the future because it is a more accurate and non-invasive way of doing surveillance for disease in our community. We don't rely on an individual to get tested and for that testing result to be reported. The wastewater gives us an indication of disease levels without it being intrusive to each individual person in our community. So I do anticipate, it may not always be COVID, but there are lots of bugs that are in our community that we as public health have historically, for decades, done surveillance, and then absolutely will continue to do surveillance on into the future.
If I might follow up? So this basically tests wastewater for Helena and East Helena?
Correct, just the municipal.
So there's no way to really use it for folks out beyond those wastewater treatment plants?
Right, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Ralph, that is absolutely correct. The limitation to the surveillance is that it is the municipal systems. We can do, make some inferences through statistical analysis that gives us an indication of what it might look like countywide. But honestly, the data is specific for the East Helena and Helena systems. We also know that most people that live out in the county and out of the city limits work in the city limits. So waste is being collected from county residents that work in the city. And then, of course, we also have visitors to the city. And so all of that is taken into consideration when the samples are analyzed by the scientists.
One more follow-up, if I might. And I seem to remember that there were only just a few cities in Montana that did this sort of thing.
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Ralph, originally it was two. And now it's expanded because of these federal funds. It has expanded. I believe we're between six and eight communities in the state of Montana that are doing wastewater surveillance now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, public comment on this item? Public comment? Any public comments? Okay. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the grant task order amendment as presented?
Mr. Chair, for purposes of discussion, I would move to approve the grant task order amendment number one to task order 24-07-7-11-147-0 as explained by Ms. Niemann.
Second.
When it's seconded, to approve the task order as presented. Further discussion? Commissioners, this, just to address, oh, did you, sorry, did I cut you off? Were you gonna?
I was just gonna point out, last week, we received reports from our agencies, the various, you know, Public Works, Public Health, IT, there were like seven reports. And everybody gave very detailed reports about money being spent and actions and concerns except the health department. It was a one-page, and it was a clip of two programs. That one was from February, and I believe the other one was going to happen in April. I'm concerned that this hasn't been brought to our attention more fully before today's meeting and our discussion. And it is a significant amount of money, $200,000. As I recall, that is the amount that the health department was short in their budget for the 24 budgeting season. And this amount of money may seem like, oh, we don't care, it's federal money. But as our budget grows and as we enter into more programs and hire more people and increase the role of government in our lives, I'm not sure that this, that this has had enough attention. Was, Ms. Niemann, was this brought in front of the Board of Health?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, this has been a program we've had since 2020 and reported multiple times to both commission and to the Board of Health.
Okay, what I'm asking you is, was the fact that it's going to cost us an extra $200,000 discussed with the Board of Health? I was at the last two meetings, and I don't believe it was.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, this amendment came since the last Board of Health meeting and since the report that was due to the commission last month. So we get information from the state when they send it, and I bring it forward as soon as we get it. So this task order amendment came to us just in the last short window. And I'm bringing it to you immediately as soon as we knew about it. As soon as the state said, we have more money, we're going to give you more money to do this work, that's when I put it on the agenda for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Niemann. I appreciate that information. As the, the language from this task order provides that effective January 1st, 2024, this task order is amended as follows. And so on first read, it appears to me that this is being amended as of January 1st. Now, and that is where they drew the line through July 31st, 2024, and extended it through 2026. So my concern is that this may have been cooking on the back burner since January of 2024. And if it has, perhaps we should have had more notice. But the state only gives you the notice when they can. It still concerns me that it's a lot of money, kind of fast, immediate action, we've got to do this right now, or... Well, anyway, those are my concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner. Few comments just about how public health works. And this actually has nothing to do with our approval last spring and summer of our 2024 budget. We approved the dollars that were available then through Public Health and Human Services. And these are grant dollars that come down to the county, not general fund dollars or our health levy dollars. These are grant dollars for this specific purpose. This program that's been going on since several years ago. So the state and feds are, one of their priorities is continuing the surveillance in communities across the country that are up and running doing this. And so they're adding more funding to that opportunity to continue that process. And so we don't really have any control over when that funding comes to the local communities. We either accept it or we don't. And if we want to keep the program going and we want to accept federal dollars so that we can help public health in general understand how the surveillance works, where as COVID fades, this has been described, other viruses will be able to be detected, flu and other things in our community that surveillance, it's a tool that is becoming more widely used and understood. And I think all of this data is going to be impactful for our nation in terms of how we track disease in our communities. So it really doesn't have as much to do, I mean, we're looking for COVID still right now, but it doesn't have as much to do with that in the future as it will other viruses and other diseases. And it is an opportunity to continue that program. Really, we're more of a pass-through entity. That money comes to us when we approve the contracts with Carroll College and others, then they do the work. We collect the data and publish that data and also pass it on to CDC. So it's, I don't see it as any threat or offbeat. This is the way public health across the state, our state at least, is funded. When money comes down, they send out a task order. We have this overall master contract with the state, and within that, they send out task orders. So when they get money from the feds or a priority is established, then those task orders get sent down to local public health departments and through these task orders and grant funding to do a specific public health activity in the community. So with this, it allows us to not only add a little bit to continue it for the rest of this fiscal year, but it will, this will be then established and will be pretty clear as we go forward for the next two fiscal years in the budget. That funding will be there for this specific purpose. And it doesn't, it's not related to our general fund dollars that are in the budget, nor our public health levy that comes from the local county taxpayer, or county taxes. Of course, it's all taxpayer dollars, it's all public funding at some level or another, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioners, you have further comment?
So if we do not amend this to accept the additional funds, won't the program continue with the same amount of funding?
Yes, there's still questions?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, if you don't accept this amendment, the program will be gone completely. We will lose all the funding, and we will have to shut down our wastewater surveillance completely.
Don't we have currently a contract through July 31st?
This is the amendment. So if you don't accept the amendment, the contract will, it will no longer exist. The original contract will not exist if you don't accept the amendment.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Further discussion?
I'm concerned about the completeness of the budgeting process in the health department. And I would like to encourage that it be more fully developed. We're seeing some adjustments being made that don't seem to be really understandable to me. And I guess I'm going to probably vote for this, but I am concerned about the completeness of the budget going forward for the health department. And I want to see it be, to be an accurate and well-thought-out budget, rather one in the past has been more of generalities. And I have concerns that we, if we're just continuing to take federal or state funding to continue programs that maybe are not needed anymore, maybe this has some new, some new use for the health of our community. And I'm willing to, I think I'm willing to go ahead and support this on that basis. But I would like to admonish the health officer to really work with that budget and make sure that it's more complete and that there is our adequate reserves for long-term needs and that we aren't coming back at the end of the budget and readjusting things that weren't accounted for in the first part of the budget. So I guess that's just my thought. I really would like to see a more complete and accurate budget from the department.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further discussion?
No.
You have a motion second on the floor, Commissioners. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, all right. We'll move on to the next item, which is Resolution 2024-19, ordering the billing of 2023 taxes to collect additional mills. We have our, looking recorder here, good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning Commissioners. You need my spelling and my last name? Oh, great. This morning, I'm presenting to you billing of the additional mills for the Montana Supreme Court ruling. Before you today is the resolution to bill out additional 17.3 mills ordered by the Montana Supreme Court. These mills were not originally included on the 2023 real estate and centrally assessed property tax bills per Resolution 2023-93. The estimated cost of printing and mailing out these bills for these additional mills will be between $30,000 and $50,000 total. For the decision of the Montana Supreme Court, Lewis and Clark County is required to send out bills for the additional 17.3 mills. This resolution does not change that, but does affect how we bill under $5, how we're handling those bills. On the original 2023 tax bill due to MCA 1516118, any taxpayer with a bill less than $5 is given a bill for their taxable amount plus an administrative fee for the minimum tax bill of $5. By remitting the total amount that would have been received through these bills to the state of Montana, we are not only paying the state of Montana what the Supreme Court has stated is due, but we are also collecting the additional mills required in a fiscally responsible manner due to the following reasons. With extensive testing and working with the software vendor, we found the software could not meet all of our needs for this exceptional circumstance. The software is currently built in a manner that generates a second bill for anyone under the $5 amount. Due to the nature of the MCA 1516118 and the administrative fee it requires, we have already collected enough to cover the additional mills from some taxpayers as it was included in their original bill by assessing their property tax alongside the administrative fee. Should they be billed in the same manner as the other property taxpayers, they would be paying this tax twice. Considering the additional costs included in sending these bills out, mailing and processing costs makes sending out the bills under $5 fiscally irresponsible. For going mailing out of the 3,760 bills by under $5 is going to save time and taxpayer dollars on staff processing time and mailing costs by directly remitting this amount to the state of Montana. Estimated cost of collecting the $6,940.38 is about $10,000 to $12,000 based on our calculations. The best option available at this time is to pay the state of Montana $6,940.38 directly for the 3,760 bills under the $5. The remaining property taxes, excuse me, the remaining property tax bills will be revised second half tax bill or a supplemental tax bill if the second half taxes have already been paid. With these items in mind, it's up to the county commissioners of Lewis and Clark County to determine how we proceed. By passing this resolution before you today, Lewis and Clark County Treasurer will direct the county property tax division to forego printing any property tax bills under $5, and the amount of $6,940.38 will be remitted directly to the state of Montana. If the resolution is not passed, then Lewis and Clark County Treasurer will direct the county property tax division to print property tax bills for all amounts due, and the process of those bills is normal. Regardless, the Lewis and Clark County Treasurer and the Lewis and Clark County Property Tax Department Division shall begin conducting the appropriate action to complete the collection of the required 17.3 mills. of the required 17.3 mills. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Crickery, Lot of information there. Thank you for all of that. We need all of it on the record. To kind of sum it up, what we're proposing through this is to send out the supplemental tax bill to everyone that has a tax bill over $5. Everyone under $5 would not receive a tax bill and we would use existing funds to cover those costs because it would cost taxpayers essentially more to send those bills out than we would collect in taxes. And we'll make the state whole, as you described, and through that process. Commissioners, questions?
How about a nice comment? This material, even though, as you said, it is complicated, but our treasurer has gone above and beyond communicating with us, coming, at least she came into my office individually and said, I think this is, there was a discussion, there was a long-term plan, and I feel very comfortable in approving what Amy Reeves is proposing.
Thank you. Other questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, I think, just to kind of restate and make sure I've got it right, if the bill is, there's about 3,700 bills that are under $5, those folks won't receive any supplemental bill, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Rolfe, yes, that's correct.
And then everybody else that's $5 or more will give the supplemental bill.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Rolfe, correct. The other issue that we're having is some software constraints. If we were to bill everyone, everything under $5 and above, we would actually be billing some individuals an additional amount that they have already paid. There's no way for the software to hold those additional taxpayers.
Because they've already, some of them, a lot of them have already paid $5 when it really was only owing a dollar or two.
That's correct. And unfortunately, the software company does not move that money that was already collected from those taxpayers and allow us to distribute that to the state funds.
All right. I think you've done a great job of working on this and again, thanks for the communication and working through that.
Thank you.
Further questions, Commissioners? Thank you. As was said, we're required to do this via Supreme Court ruling in terms of the supplemental collection. Further discussion, any further discussion? Public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, just as you're considering this item, I just wanted to chime in and say that the explanation to our citizens of what is occurring, I know that Ms. Reeves has been working with Betsy Kirkaby, our communications outreach staff person, to make sure we're going to be getting as good of information as we can out regarding why people may be seeing these additional tax bills coming out to them. So we're going to do our best to make sure we're communicating well with the public on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Nothing. Any public comment again? Okay. How about a motion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Resolution 2024 ordering the billing of 2023 taxes to collect additional mills as presented by County Treasurer Amy Reeves.
Second.
Been moved in second, Commissioner, I just want to, you said Resolution 2024, it's 2024-19, just want to make sure we have that for the record, right? You're okay with that?
Absolutely.
Seconds, okay with that? All right, discussion.
I do want to remark that out of the 56 counties, I believe there are 47 or 49 that are going through this same sort of gyrations because of our disagreement over the value of the extra mills that the Department of Revenue said we all needed to pay. So we tried to keep this money in the pockets of our local taxpayers. However, we were not able to successfully do that. It's now in the general fund of the state, or it will be when we collect it.
Further comment?
Well, I just, I guess I would agree that we attempted to keep it in the taxpayer's pocket. Department of Revenue decided, said that they wanted that money in the general fund to eventually, I'm supposed to re-add to the school levy or to the school funding, their attempt to achieve equalization of schools. I thought we were right. Supreme Court thought we were wrong. We are complying.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, not, it's basically the same thing. I think that the county's decision was to levy something less than what the state had asked us to levy, and we did that. That was taken to court. The court said that the state, we must comply with the state's number of mills that they sent to us, and thus we have to, we have to send out a supplemental tax bill. I'll just leave it at that.
I've got one more thing.
Commissioner?
Thank you for your patience here. It just occurred to me too that when I was campaigning for this position, one of the issues that came up was that our citizens want to have the people who are in charge of collecting the money to be the elected people, not people who are hired guns. And the people, the three people you see here in front of you, we are elected and we have to go out there and explain why the money, the 17.3 mills goes to the state and it does not go into a special pot for schools, it goes into the general fund. I was really shocked at that. I just assumed that, no, this is school money, I support the schools, let's put it aside. No, it goes into the general fund and the legislature decides if it goes for prisons or roads or whatever else they want to spend it on. That just doesn't seem right. And we've got a hired gun at the Department of Revenue, and he is the one who decides that 17.3 mills has got to be collected and put into the general fund for their discretionary use of the money. I'm not happy about this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, and I intend to support the resolution. We must follow the law. I do want to thank Treasurer Crickery, Quarter Reeves for all the hard work. This has not been without much, everything from hand wringing to like, how are we going to figure out how to do this? And the software, as you mentioned, touched very, from a very high level on all the intricacies that went into trying to figure this out. So just appreciate all the hard work you and your staff has been doing to try and make this right. Decisions come with a lot of consequences sometimes, and sometimes good, sometimes bad. In this case, the county was wrong in terms of our decision and the Supreme Court told us we have to make a change. So in addition to that, I'd like to thank the county attorney's office and the deputy county attorneys for all the work they're doing to help with how to figure this out and next steps. Your advice all along has been very good and I appreciate it very much. So, thank you. All right. With that, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion?
Just one more thing, I would disagree with you. I think we were right and the Supreme Court was wrong, but they have the final say.
All right. I guess we get to think what we want, but we have to follow the law, was my, I guess my, and the rulings. So that's, that's a fact. So, all right. With that, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is abandonment of a portion of Farmview Drive Road 2023-003. Mr. Gonzalez, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Phil Gonzalez here with Community Development and Planning. Before you, I'm presenting road abandonment application for a portion, Farmview Drive Application Road 2023-3. The applicant is Chad Bachmeyer and the representative is Jay Barti, engineers. Before use of the vicinity map of the proposed application, the hatched marked area is the existing Bachmeyer subdivision located off Highway 12, south of Spokane Ranch Road, east City of Helena. Farmview Drive was a, is a dedicated public access and utility easement upon the plating of the Bachmeyer subdivision on December 28th of 2006. The physical road, Farmview Drive, was recently removed, a portion of it, by the Department of Transportation as part of a safety project last year, which combined multiple approaches onto the east side of Lot 2 of the Bachmeyer Minor Subdivision. This commission has previously considered that amended plat of the Bachmeyer Minor Subdivision thereby conditioned the actions to declare a portion of the county, to declare it a county road and abandon a portion of Farmview Drive to accurately reflect the new approach The petitioner, Chad Bachmeyer, submitted an application, this application rode to 2023-3 to abandon a portion of Farmview Drive on December 8th of 2023. On December 21st of 2023, this commission approved Resolution 2023-104, a resolution to declare Farmview Drive a county road. On December 21st of 2023, this commission ordered an investigation into the petition to abandon a portion of Farmview Drive. On January 3rd, Board of County Commissioner Cannon's Payne, Director of Public Works, Jenny Chambers and myself conducted an investigation on site of the abandonment of Farmview Drive as required by state statute. So again, here's an image that you've previously seen at previous presentations, but it shows the original access to the Bachmeyer subdivision off the original Farmview Drive coming off Highway 12. Farmview Drive went north to the west of the subdivision, giving all five lots access. Additionally, you'll see South Mitchell Road to the south of the highway and directly east of the Bachmeyer subdivision's capital concrete and the Winston Lifestyle having access as well. This road abandonment application has been reviewed by staff against review criteria found within MCA and found the application to comply with the criteria, which includes the effect on access from private landowners, the public ability to public lands or waters, the effects of rights of any public utility, and the effect of the public interest. A 30-day agency comment period was held to determine if the abandonment of a portion of Farmview Drive would affect operations or plans of utility companies. Northwest Energy responded stating the abandonment would not have any effect upon their operations or plans. A 15-day public noticing period was conducted. A sign was posted on site, adjacent properties were mailed a notice of this public hearing, and two postings within the Helena Independent Record to ensure adequate public notice. With that, staff is recommending approval of this partial road abandonment application subject to the conditions which were found in the staff report. And with that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Could we just, for the record, go over the recommended conditions quickly? Just to, so we discuss them on the record here?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the recommended conditions of approval, so this will essentially be preliminary approval, will come back once these conditions are met, but these are part of the overall amended Bachmeyer subdivision, which is, has preliminary approval as well. So these conditions read that the applicant will submit a certificate of survey showing the abandonment of a portion of that 60-foot wide Farmview Drive easement. And on that survey will include the resolution that was recently or previously approved by this commission that abandoned a portion of Farmview Drive, as well as some other materials to be submitted with that application, including ownership of documentation showing ownership of the property, any potential lien owners, lien holders or claimants. And having that preliminary approval or this preliminary approval go for not more than two calendar years before they would have to come back and seek additional approvals.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions right now? We fully understand the recommended conditions. Okay, any questions at this time? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. And anybody else like to speak to this that? Yes, sir. Yes, is this public comment or are you the applicant? I can't. Okay, come on up, public comment. We'd love to have you. If you just state your name, name and address for the record, that'd be grand. Thank you, welcome.
I'm Steve Michelson. I live at 2021 Farmview Drive. Originally, when they decided to make this change, I was upset and still am upset about it. I think it's a pain in the neck to have this, have that, to have us go down that way to the left and then right down to our farm instead of directly straight down. I think it was nonsense, but that's the way it goes and I'll live with that. I didn't understand.
Could you put the map back up?
I live at the farm in the back.
There, that's what I want. Thank you.
My property is at the farm way in the back there, 2021. And I don't understand what the purpose, you know, as you might imagine, when I got this letter and it said we are interested in the disappearance of Farmview Drive, I thought, you mean, does that mean our road disappears? You know, I mean, I really wasn't sure what that meant and I was just, wanted to understand what the purpose for the disappearance of that road is, number one. And number two, you know, is that going to affect our dress? Is that going to affect how we drive into our property? And just simply by seeing that posting right there, obviously I didn't take the time that I should have to read the thing to see what was happening, so I wasn't sure that this was the appropriate time to make a comment, but I felt this was probably the last time that I would have a chance to say this. So I just would like to have clarified, what's the reason for this resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Michelson. After all public comment, we'll try and answer your questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Anything further?
I think not. It's just that I'm not, you know, it was of a concern of mine to see the word disappearance. And in the letter, it did not mention that it was a portion of Farmview Drive. It just said the disappearance of Farmview Drive, which means that affects me.
Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your concern, your comments. Any further public comment on this item? Any further public comment? Mr. Gonzalez, I'll have you back up. We'll try and answer some questions. The overall, if we go back a ways and when this happened, the overall understanding is that when the state of Montana improved Highway 12, they said, you can't have this many accesses right here. Essentially, you've got to consolidate down to one access and make it work, essentially. And you can talk about the details and a little more, what happened here?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that's correct. MDT began a project of widening and some safety measures along Highway 12 here. Some of those measures were to consolidate access points along Highway 12, which would include here and here and align this access point with South Mitchell Gulch, which is very common, some of the practices that they'll do. So yes, it is just a portion of Farmview Drive so that remaining properties all have access to their property and they put it in a center turn lane. And the amended subdivision is a process to kind of do this on the record, to abandon a portion of the road and ensure that the road that is there is up to county standards.
So the part of Farmview Drive that Mr. Michaels, Michaels, right, yes, that has access to his property, the new portion that remains, he'll have access, there's no worry about access in terms of getting to and from his property. It may change a little bit, a little jog there over, over what is essentially the length of a block, I suppose, to the new access. But there'd essentially be one access on the highway from that whole area. The two that we see on each side of that main one are the ones that are, have been eliminated, correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that is correct.
Okay. And so the business on the right. Okay. And so the business on the right and all the, all the private property on the left will be all accessed by that center, which says Farmview Drive relocated on the map.
Mr. Chair, commissioner, that's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure people understand. Commissioners, yes?
And it, and it seems to me more logical to have the, have it directly off, opposite the road coming from the, the south as well.
Mr. Chair, commissioner, that's correct. Aligning intersections together is a, I believe, a priority for MDT with their highways.
So we're, so we're aligning them both north to south and we're reducing from three access points to one?
It's two, two accesses to one, but yes, you are.
But aren't we, isn't, is this access also removed?
So this, so maybe I'm not showing this correctly, but this is the approach and design that was put in by MDT. So we're removing this and this, and then aligning this new approach with this road here.
So there really was, but there, so there really was an access point to the east there, but it's, that's gone, that's going to be gone as well.
Mr. Chair, commissioner, that's correct.
In that sense, we're going from three access points on the north of the road to, to one.
Yes, essentially.
While the, our action today just deals with the two, but, but in effect, it's doing, it does that.
Any other questions? Thank you for that explanation. I hope that helps understand and answer the questions.
Actually, I will remark, I was part of the team that went out and looked at it. And, you know, there's a lot to be said for doing an actual eyes-on property. You get a real clear understanding of how it actually works. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with this reconfiguration. I think it, if this saves one life because somebody was not paying attention and they were doing a left turn across traffic into one of these other, this is, this is important. It's a life and death matter. And so I, I hope, you know, we can take it seriously, recognize that for the good of our community, we have to provide for the safety. If it was my teenager driving along there that got run into by a fire truck, oh wait, that wasn't here. It was down the road a ways, but it did happen. And it was recently and recently being within the last five years. But this is really important.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else from the commission? All right. Because, Mr. Michaels, you're the only public commenter, I'll, I'll ask for one more opportunity for public comment. Please come up and reintroduce yourself, if you would, public comment.
I have to tell you that I was really, really appreciative of the fact that they made that left turn lane. And despite the fact that it was a little bit more inconvenient for me to get to my property back there, there were times when, when we really felt like we were taking our life into our hands, stopping there, especially with big semi trucks behind us. And three times I had to replace the mailbox on the right-hand side because people tried to go around me and crashed into the mailbox. But I need to also point out one other thing too, that's just since that piece of, that area there has been improved, there has been an incredibly tragic death right there when a, a van was turning left into Farmview Drive and a fellow that was on a motorcycle who was living in the east and was traveling across the United States and he was in Montana and he was visiting his friend here in Montana. And he was going straight down towards Helena and the van turned left and he crashed right into him and died. And our neighbors were the first people on the scene and it was horrific. So despite the fact that, that it's been built to improve, that doesn't mean that deaths aren't going to occur. I mean, that was just really terrible, but I, I like that. And what I, what I'm understanding now that I didn't before, the word disappearance scared me because I thought, so I mean, we're going to have to change our address. But the understanding is that that straight line has to be officially removed, apparently. And I, I only wish that they would have continued to say Farmview Drive right from the road, because now when I give directions, I have to say, take the access road to Farmview Drive and then turn left on Farmview Drive and then you're there. So it was, it's a little bit more inconvenient than just having Farmview Drive straight. But anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. And Mr. Gonzalez, just one more clarification. I believe this will be called Farmview Drive. Is that right?
That is the plan. As I mentioned, it's going through the amended plat process, but.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it just, it's a process. We'll get there. But one step at a time. This is part of the process. All right, commissioners, with that, we will, any other public comment? Any other public comment? We'll close public comment now formally and ask for a motion, commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the abandonment of a portion of Farmview Drive Road 20, 2023-003, as explained by Mr. Gonzalez.
Second?
Moving in second to approve the abandonment of a portion of Farmview Drive Road 2023-003 as presented and commissioners, commissioners' discussion. I just want to point out that we have discussed the recommended conditions of approval and that I agree with them and am fine with that. I appreciate the comment today as well as Mr. Gonzalez's explanation of, of the process and situation. Anything further, commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. We are at that time in our meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the commission, but not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we will stand adjourned. Thank you, commissioners.
Must have been a fascinating discussion to have all these people, me.